Guys, welcome to the I Love Seaville Show. It's great to be with you on a Thursday. Sometimes I lose track of the days. Thank you kindly for joining us. We've been working very hard here at I Love Seaville and V M V Brands. Seventy to eighty hour work weeks. We thoroughly enjoy what we do. We enjoyed this program with Michael Payne as a featured guest. This gentleman, this proponent of Charlottesville dominated the Democratic primary. He won seven of nine city precincts. We're going to spend about an hour with him catching up on what transpired on Tuesday evening from start to finish. I kind of want to showcase the emotional and the personal side of what a candidate goes through on Election Day. Also discuss his team and the efforts of his entire team, which I thought was fabulous. His grassroots campaign was momentous from the beginning. I thought Michael Payne did a great job on social, great job from a door knocking standpoint, great job from a fundraising standpoint, and really getting a lot of small donations galvanizing his brand and his campaign. We'll spotlight all this. We'll do some crystal ball prognosticating with what's going to happen down the road between now and November 5th. If Michael will, should get elected, and I think he will get elected on November 5th, what he has in store, you know, from his agenda, from a policy standpoint. A lot we're going to cover on the program. We'll give some love to the folks that make the show possible. First, let's thank Interstate Pest and Service Companies. I don't know if you realize this, but this business started in 1969 with one truck and one man. Mr. Wells, the first generation, would go to his first home, service them successfully, and then go to the second home. And before he went to the second home, he'd call them from a payphone and say, may I come to you? Today, it's four generations strong, almost 100 employees. The headquarters right around the corner from Boto's Bagels on Harris, an office in Richmond, and an office in the Shenandoah Valley. It's Interstate Pest and Service Companies. We also thank Dr. Wagner of Scott Wagner Chiropractic and Sports Medicine for being a part of the show. Dr. Wagner's changing people's lives through chiropractic care, sports medicine, and physical therapy. Who's got your back? Dr. Wagner's got your back. V M V Brands, the proud advertising agency of record of both those businesses. We already have Dave Warwick of Three Notch on the show. Bellamy Brown's watching. James Watson's watching. The musician Asher McLaughlin's watching. Travis Wilburn's watching, a tourism entrepreneur. We're live on seven channels across the I Love Seaville Network with a number of folks on the network right now, and as they should be. I think we should go to the studio cam and welcome Michael Payne to the show. First, I'm going to say thank you for taking time from your busy day to join us.
Thank you.
The second thing I'm going to say is domination on Tuesday. You won seven of nine precincts. I thought you won in convincing fashion. I'm going to get out of the way, put the victory in perspective, put what was going through your mind when you got the win in perspective.
Yeah, well, I mean, going into Election Day, you know, anything was possible. I mean, it's a low turnout election. We did a ton of work grassroots organizing, not just during this election, but before that, going to city council, advocating for housing, local action on climate change, involvement with groups like Indivisible Charlottesville and the Low Income Housing Coalition. So, you know, it was a really, it was a really humbling moment to see the level of support from the community and to see, you know, again, you know, going into Election Night, anything's possible. And so to be able to come in first place overall and win seven out of nine precincts is just, again, a really humbling feeling. And, you know, all credit goes to the team that supported my campaign. Jake Gold, Olivia Patton, Emily Cohn Miller, and others who really did the legwork of, you know, getting canvases together, doing graphic design, getting websites put up and communications. And it really is a collective effort, both of the team and the community, and just a really, really great feeling.
Will Vanderland, thank you for joining us. Richard Fox is watching the show right now. A number of folks in City Hall watching right now. Give it a like and give it a share on any of the seven channels that you are watching, please. Emotionally, when, you know, once it was, I kept hitting refresh on the NBC29.com website, it was like 70%, 80%, 90%. Once we started getting to 80, 90%, it was pretty clear cut. I'm sure you were probably not wanting to put the cart before the horse, and until it got to 100 and all the absentee ballots were in, I'm sure we were like, okay, now I can breathe a sigh of relief. Before we get into policy and the tactics and strategy, how about just what you were feeling, man? 90%, 100% absentee ballots? What was going through your mind personally?
Anxious, definitely anxious. And, you know, I have the attitude until every single vote's counted, it's not over. So I was waiting until absentees came in, you know, it took, it was agonizing waiting for the Walker precinct to come in, the last one. But really, you know, just a really cathartic, great moment, because, I mean, there's just so much work that goes into a campaign, not just for myself, for the team around me, and the people who believed in the message and believed in the possibility that we can really take bold action locally on affordable housing, inequality, climate change. And to, you know, see all that work result in victory and come together at the end is just a great moment. And honestly, you know, I was so exhausted by the end of that day, not just, you know, being up at 4:00 AM, going to all the different polling locations all day, getting, as you can see, sunburnt.
Yeah, you got sun. You're red.
And, you know, and, you know, the month before, just going all out with canvassing and going out to the community and talking directly one-on-one with voters. It's sort of just like a final sprint, and when you get to the finish line, it's just sort of, you know.
A relief.
A relief, exhausting, exciting, and, you know, it's something I think, you know, I'm still processing. It doesn't, doesn't quite feel 100% real yet.
Debbie Brown, welcome to the show. Bill Grandford, thank you kindly for joining us. Welcome Lauren Linsky. Thank you for watching the I Love Seaville Show, seven channels live on the I Love Seaville Network. Okay, let's talk kind of some strategy. Let's talk some X's and O's. You, and I've said this on the show here, I was very straightforward. I had Lloyd Snook as a favorite to win the Democratic primary. I was basing it on the following barometers. Most money in the campaign war chest, longest ties in the community, arguably most name recognition because of the longest ties in the community, the experience with the Planning Commission and the Democratic Party. So I was basing the odds of winning on those five criteria. I always had you as a clear-cut second to win, just right behind Lloyd. Throw this question to you. To come in first and to beat what I think is safe to say an institution in Lloyd Snook, what does that say about Michael Payne, the team and the campaign? And the city?
I think it shows, you know, one, there was a great team around me, again, Emily Cohn Miller, Olivia, Jake, who just did an incredible amount of work, and I can't thank them enough. I mean, really, 95% of this victory goes to them, as well as the volunteers who came out to canvas, phone bank, write letters to the editor, you know, recruit friends and tell people about the message of the campaign. That this victory is really all due to their work. I think, you know, it shows again that there's no substitute for grassroots organizing, that grassroots organizing is effective, that you can win with that approach, and that you don't need the most money. If you can go out into the community and you can talk about the day-to-day concerns that people are feeling and talk about the issues that matter to people and build enthusiasm, that that's what it's all about. As well as, I think, you know, for myself, having a track record over, over the years of being an advocate at city council, seeing success on campaigns to get the city to divest from fossil fuels, being part of the Charlottesville Income Housing Coalition and, you know, helping to support their campaigns against, you know, the evictions at Belmont Apartments, the work they've been doing with the redevelopment of public housing and Friendship Court. And, you know, the campaign was never really about me. It was about uplifting the work of the community. And I think we've seen over the past few years especially, the growth of a progressive movement in both Charlottesville and central Virginia. And it's that movement which has been driving the conversation and driving change, and it was really just about uplifting the work that the community's been doing for years. And I think, you know, people, people are hungry for city council to come together and take action on, you know, the bread and butter issues that impacts people's day-to-day lives. And I think that's a message that just connected.
I love it. I love it. That's a sizzle reel. My first question to start the show, all the way through that answer. I think it's a very good snapshot or flip book of what really transpired, him personally, Harris, and then the team as well. Roger Voyenze, the real estate agent, thank you for watching. Brennan Rhodes, thank you for watching. Margaret Matthews, thank you for watching. Abby Tenenbaum-Guskin says, you were wrong, Jerry. I was wrong. I thought, I thought Lloyd Snook was going to win in a landslide. I did, Abby, have Michael as a clear-cut two. So I had him definitely winning the primary or coming in one of the top three spots in the primary, I should say. But you were right, Abby. I did have Lloyd winning the primary and Michael in the two slot. Abby says, we need fresh minds and true passion. Michael Payne is exactly what our city needs. His team was the most talented, heartfelt team of all. Love that Michael will have a seat on council, so pumped. I think he also will have a seat on council, so why don't we go there? And we're not putting the cart before the horse. We're having a conversation for the sake of a talk show, and we're basing it on votes that came through a primary, which is a good barometer of what could happen in November. So it's empirical data we're basing it on. Should you win a spot on council, and the odds say you will win a spot on council, what are the top five policy or initiatives Michael Payne is going to effort in his tenure?
You know, I think number one is definitely affordable housing. We're going to have a lot going on there, and I hope that we can really get involved in some bold, big-picture ideas on affordable housing. In particular, I think we really need to drill down into the details of redevelopment of public housing and really be serious about not just making a financial commitment that can make renovating Crescent Halls and building new public housing on South First Street happen, but also, you know, how can we make sure that we do it the right way? How can we, you know, empower city staff to be, have an active role in that process and, you know, create strong site plans and continue programs like the partnership between PVCC Habitat and the Housing Authority to help create job training for public housing residents so they can be part of the redevelopment process, so it can also be an opportunity for community wealth building. Likewise, in affordable housing, I think, you know, trying to take a look at our zoning is going to be really important. We haven't updated our zoning since 2003 in any significant way, and in a lot of ways it's just outdated. And I know the Planning Commission is moving forward to try and start that process, but that's something that, you know, any future city council is really going to have to take seriously. Environmental issues are huge for me. I think the climate crisis is the biggest crisis facing our society, and we have to do what we can locally to reduce emissions and build local climate resilience. So I guess a third major priority would be, this June, city council is going to be voting on their emissions reduction target goal, and the challenge for the incoming council will be, we set the goal, that's great, but now the hard part. What's the strategy and specific policies to make that goal a reality? And that's something I really look forward to working on. Fourth, public transit. Really continuing the work that's just starting with the Regional Transit Authority, which is bringing together UVA, John, the city, and Albemarle County to, and then ideally to think about how can we have that be a stepping stone to creating a regional transit authority so we can really strengthen our public transit system. There's so many working families that rely on public transit, and it's so important to the future of growth, not just in Charlottesville, but Albemarle County and the urban ring. Public transportation is in, is a lot of ways the backbone of good growth. And you said five, so a fifth, I suppose, would be, I'm really curious if the city can create a bold, long-term plan for the future of the Rayvanna River Corridor. That's something that hasn't gotten as much attention during the campaign, but I think the Rayvanna River Corridor is really an underutilized natural resource for Charlottesville. It's such an incredible natural resource. It could be such, it could really be a defining part of Charlottesville, but we've sort of neglected it, and we haven't really, I think, taken care to create a long-term plan for what we envision the future of that to be. Because I really think, you know, it's such a wonderful resource that could be on par with something like the downtown mall in terms of people think of that as being part of Charlottesville.
I like those answers. I'm going to play devil's advocate for the sake of a talk show. I think all five are on point. I think all five would make city better, Charlottesville better. Hunter Blackwell, Sarah Hill Buchinski, Orion Faruk, welcome to the show. My devil's advocate. Your top five initiatives, no mention of support of small business owners, entrepreneurship. And then I got to also add the tourism piece. Charlottesville, as we know, is a, is a mecca for tourism. Tourism in a lot of ways is the number one industry in our community, driving the most taxable revenue in our community. When tourists come, they're willing to open up their pocketbooks and spend more generously than perhaps an average citizen because they're on vacation. And that's not just the hotel sector, that's restaurants, that's music, that's transportation, that's everything. Counterpoint is, why not more of a focus on tourism and entrepreneurship?
Yeah. Well, I would disagree slightly, you know. For example, with the Rayvanna River Corridor, I think, you know, that's, that's the kind of natural resource that can really become a magnet for tourism and people coming to the community. We have great local businesses like the Rayvanna River Company, which have really been trying to promote and amplify what an incredible local resource we have in the Rayvanna River. Likewise, you know, when we talk about doing redevelopment of public housing the right way, I think that means we do so in a way where we're trying to use things like HUD Section 3 to provide job opportunities for people who live in public housing and really think about strategies for community wealth building. And Richmond, Virginia, and other cities have been really exploring this idea of community wealth building and how to create strategies for that. And a major component of it is local small businesses. And I think, when I think of what makes Charlottesville a great community, our local small businesses are a huge part of that. And that, those are the kind of businesses that we need to be working to support. I know Dr. Wes Bellamy has been doing some great work, as well as city staff, on creating recently a low-interest rate loan fund, which has really been helping a lot of local small businesses, especially minority-owned businesses. That's definitely something, you know, I'd want to continue to support and expand if possible. Because again, when we think about, you know, what are the kind, what's the kind of growth that benefits the community most? I really think it's about small businesses rather than, you know, your large outside employers like, you know, we wouldn't have it here, but like a Walmart coming in, the benefit to the community.
Or like an Amazon.
An Amazon, a Walmart. I think that the benefit you get from local small businesses is just so much more because that wealth stays in the community, you're able to support people who live here, you're able to provide job opportunities for people to live here. And I think you just get, you know, you just think about the incredible, you know, local companies like Breadworks or Albemarle Baking Company that just do really unique things that you're not going to get, you know, with a big outside company.
Do you, how do you feel, and I follow this closely, how do you feel as a leader in the community about Joffrey Woodruff's incubator? Joffrey Woodruff is across the street right now from us in the Enterprise Building. He is redeveloping the Ice Park, and he's building the center of developing entrepreneurs. And Joffrey Woodruff is going to essentially house his portfolio of businesses in what is going to be called the Code Building, as you know, where the Ice Park is. I'm setting the stage for everyone else. And, and he's going to build a tech hub. He funded, I think it was 125 million to the University of Virginia to build, was it a data science school? A data science school? A lot of folks see that as potentially a farm system, if you may, for what he's trying to do with code. How do you, as a leader in the community, look at what Joffrey's doing with that tech incubator?
Yeah. Well, I, several weeks ago, I reached out to Joffrey, and we had a good conversation. And I think, you know, I think his intentions are certainly to try and do the right thing. And I know he's very conscious about thinking about, you know, how can I do as much as possible to have this benefit the community in as many different ways as possible? I think the concerns I have are just, you look at cities like Seattle and San Francisco, which have become tech hubs, and it's driven economic growth, but not everyone is benefiting from that economic growth. And I think that's our challenge locally, is we're increasingly becoming a tech hub. We have a lot of, you know, the Code Building, Willow Tree, and a lot of other tech companies are increasingly coming to Charlottesville and Albemarle. And our challenge is, how do we make sure that as many people as possible are benefiting from that growth? Because what we've seen in other cities is that it's accelerated gentrification, the job opportunities haven't been open to everyone, and you've had a lot of, you know, rich, wealthy young professionals move into communities and displace low-income neighborhoods, and, you know, people who grew up in those cities aren't benefiting. And I think, again, our challenge is, and I think it gets back to that idea of creating strategies for community wealth building, how can we think about, how can we take this economic growth that's coming and try and have as many people benefit as possible? You know, just a small example of the kind of, what that could look like, I think the We Code Initiative, what Dr. Wes Bellamy and others have been involved in, I think is a kind of program that can help open up access to those job opportunities to more people. Not just, you know, we have the growth of a tech industry, but I think we're also seeing the growth of a really strong renewable energy sector in Charlottesville. And I think that's really going to be the backbone of a lot of our growth going forward, thinking of companies like Segura Solar. And the city did a really interesting program called Go Solar, where they provided job training and certification for installing solar panels, paid $15 an hour during the job training and certification period. And everyone who completed the program was then hired at a local renewable energy company, starting out installing solar panels. But, you know, I've talked to folks who started out installing solar panels and then moved up in those businesses. You know, those are just two specific examples, but I think that's the kind of thing we need to be thinking about, because the Code Building's coming. You know, it can be a good thing, but we just have to do the work to make sure that we're being mindful that tech growth does not automatically equal benefit for everyone.
Let's continue with this conversation. This is a good one, because I think it's important to the future of Charlottesville. I agree with a lot of what you said in that it's clear Charlottesville, because of its proximity to the University of Virginia, because the amount of wealth that's in the community, specifically at Joffrey Woodruff, that we are becoming a hub or an epicenter for technology, perhaps on a similar track of what San Francisco was, albeit decades behind where San Francisco is now. But it's a, it's a barometer. If Charlottesville continues to head down the path of San Francisco, you have potentially the chance of it being a 10.27 square mile city of millionaires that are in a tech mindset that have a ton of disposable income. Your fear is that it would further gentrify the city, further drive the folks that are below area median income, outside of the city of Charlottesville, outside of the urban ring, deeper into the outer counties. What that is, in a lot of ways, is capitalism taking its course? And are you of the mindset that we need to be a steward or a, what is a good word for this? Like a massager or a molder of what that capitalistic evolution is?
Well, you know, I think certainly. I mean, you look at, you know, I think people who grew up in the community and are low-income residents should not be being displaced by the growth that's happening, and that we need to do as much as we can in local government and on city council to try and ensure that, you know, people are able to afford to live here. And because I think, you know, you look at other cities that have seen skyrocketing inequality, that have seen rapid gentrification, and I don't think it's good for local communities, and I don't think it creates a really stable, long-term economic growth model. Already in Charlottesville, according to the Orange dot report, one in four residents in Charlottesville can't afford basic necessities. There was a recent event this week where there was a study done showing that 50% of families in Charlottesville currently spend more than, more on housing than what the standard best practice is of about 1/3 of your income. We've seen the African-American population in Charlottesville steadily decreasing because neighborhoods like 10th and Page and Fifeville are being gentrified. And I think, you know, it's our role as city councilors and local government to try and do what we can to, again, make sure that as many people as possible are able to benefit from the economic growth happening here. And a lot of that work is going to happen in the community. It's not all going to, you know, come from city council. There's a lot of incredible work being done in the community, again, initiatives like We Code when it comes to housing, things, you know, the projects at Habitat and our local community land trust are doing. And a lot of our role in city government, I think, is to amplify that work and where we can provide strategic support. And, again, I mean, you know, I think part of what makes Charlottesville such a unique and great community is that you had, you had a working-class culture where working-class people were able to afford to live here. And, you know, if you push everyone out, I think you're going to lose a lot of the culture, a lot of the local businesses that really made Charlottesville a great community. And the danger really is that we become sort of a playground for people working in the tech industry and everyone who's working in the service sector, working at UVA and working as waiters and in the restaurant industry, live in Stanton, Waynesboro, surrounding counties, and drive in. And I just don't think, you know, that's a, that's a good vision for where we want to go as a city. And I don't think we have to. A lot of cities are really doing exciting things when it comes to community wealth building and trying to, you know, open up the benefits of economic growth to as many people as possible. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can adopt best practices from other cities and I think really do something unique here in Charlottesville.
Let's end that as the second sizzle reel. A lot of great content there. We'll start the second sizzle reel with his top five policy initiatives, all the way through that answer. I appreciate the straightforwardness. He's not sidestepping anything. I appreciate that. Abby says, not everyone coming in has the pockets to spend a lot of money, and we need to focus on growth for all. That's Michael, and his passion comes across loud and clear. You're getting some props as well from Joanne Carniel Verdi. She says, thank you, Michael Payne. Give the show a like and a share, just like Dan Barnes have done, like Becca Cole has done, like John Gilmer has done. Live on seven channels across the I Love Seaville Network, welcome Gilly Garf, Laura Kelly, Kateyn Reynolds, John Pritzloff to the program. Question coming in from Travis Wilburn, who's an entrepreneur in the tourism space. Thank you for this question, Travis. How do you fight or manage supply and demand, though?
In terms of?
In terms of, I think he's speaking specifically in the topic we just covered, which was capitalism, supply and demand, and that there's a lot of money. A good example of supply and demand is when Charlottesville was getting the recognition as the best place to live in America. And all these publications were running with the best place to live in America, and then you started having this huge demand of people coming to Charlottesville wanting housing. Like, my wife's family's from Long Island, and when someone on Long Island sells their home and comes down to Charlottesville, they'd come with a sack of money.
Yeah.
Because their home on Long Island is much more expensive than homes in Charlottesville and central Virginia. So we have a huge demand in this town, no true supply added at any level. How do we manage supply and demand?
Yeah. Which is a great question, I think. You know, in a lot of ways, you know, with my work with Habitat, you know, I've traveled around the state, a lot into southwest Virginia and cities like Petersburg, and you see that those are communities which are facing economic degrowth, they're seeing population decline. And in a lot of ways, in Charlottesville, we're sort of suffering from success in that we're seeing so much economic growth that it's displacing people. And so we have a very different challenge than a lot of other cities in Virginia. And I think we're fortunate in the sense that I think Charlottesville is in a pretty good position, long-term, to continue economic growth. Again, with the university being here, the strength of our local business economy, we're, I think we're just going to continue to see growth, and that's something that we don't have to worry about as much as a lot of communities and like, again, southwest Virginia might, which, as you said, is bringing growth, bringing population increase. I think a lot of that gets down to the question of zoning reform. A lot of our zoning is rooted in the 90s and early 2000s, which was a time period where Charlottesville was seeing population decline.
Yeah. Preventing white flight.
Yeah, I mean, and you see, you saw in the 90s and early 2000s, city officials were discussing, how do we create growth and prevent people from leaving the city?
Incentivize.
Right. And now it's the complete opposite. But a lot of our zoning is rooted in a time period where, again, we had population decline. And so we're zoned in a lot of ways as if we're a small suburban community that's not growing, but we're growing. And I think we really have to take a look at our zoning, especially around entrance corridors, and figure out, how can we incentivize the construction of more affordable duplexes and smaller apartments to try and get to more of that missing middle and provide more supply in Charlottesville? As well as, especially in the urban ring around Albemarle County. You know, we are increasingly growing into Albemarle County, and we really need to partner closely with the Board of Supervisors to try and prevent urban sprawl and create good development in the urban ring that's walkable, bikeable, that has access to public transportation. And, and yeah, I mean, I think, you know, that's just going to have to be part of the affordable housing piece, but we have to do it in a really thoughtful, strategic way, because you can do zoning reform in a way that backfires and doesn't end up benefiting affordability. So we have to be really thoughtful and intentional about what we're doing and not, you know, not just rush through with something.
A lot of questions coming in. I'm getting questions on Twitter and direct message on Instagram as well. Questions coming in, guys, on the seven Facebook channels we're broadcasting. You can hit me up on any social channel, and I will relay them to Michael Payne, as long as they're respectful and on point and on topic. This is from Matthew Gilligan, who I think is a Twitter rock star. We're going to see him tonight at the, you're going to go there?
Yeah, I plan to be there.
Yeah, the Abundant Life Ministries Charity Function is tonight. He's going to be there, I'm going to be there. It should be a good time. Michael Payne, he's a big fan of yours. Michael Payne, what specific changes would you like to see to the zoning code? How does your plan to address some of the concerns people have about changes possibly be? How does your plan to address some of the concerns people have about changes possibly be, possibly to the R1 zoning? And whether increasing gentrification or allowing for apartment building in R1 neighborhoods, how that will impact the folks that live in R1? Plots of land. That's a good question.
Yeah. Well, and the important thing to acknowledge is that-
I guess we should explain what R1 is first. Not everyone knows.
Yeah. So R1 zoning is what's commonly called single-family zoning. It designates a plot of land as saying, you know, if you're a developer, the only thing you can build is a single-family home. You couldn't build a duplex that's one home, you know, split into two, so two people able to live there. You couldn't build an apartment. And so over half the city is zoned currently R1. So the only thing, if you're a developer, that you can build is a single-family home. At the same time, we're a growing city, over 60% of the city are renters. And so I think we're seeing a mismatch between what the demand is in Charlottesville and what the supply of housing that's able to be constructed is. And our challenge is how do we start to align our current demand with supply? And I think, you know, other city, you know, when you talk about, you know, reducing the use of R1 zoning, for most neighborhoods, you're not going to see, the, the neighborhood character will remain the same. You know, you can build duplexes and triplexes-
That look like the other homes.
Exactly like a single-family home. And there's a few neighborhoods in, in Charlottesville that are almost all duplexes and they fit in with the neighborhood. They're great communities.
I think you posted those on Twitter at one time when you were canvassing.
Yeah.
Some in the JPA area, if memory serves correct.
It's in Johnson Village. I think they were built in either the seventies or eighties. And grandfathered. And it's interesting, you see, you know, I was canvassing around there and talking to the, the families who live there. And they were talking about, you know, they loved the community. It was one of the only affordable places they were able to find for their families in Charlottesville. But all around them, what's being built are single-family homes that are selling for six, $700,000. Because that's what our zoning incentivizes, is the construction of hotels, office bays, or large, single-family homes. And so I think, you know, maybe a good place to start is looking at some entrance corridors where we can, you know, make some moves to reduce the use of R1 zoning. And, you know, seeing the growth that's happened there, I think people will see that it's not about jump dumping a giant luxury apartment right next to your home. It's really preserving neighborhood character, but just opening up the ability for more people to live in a neighborhood. And, you know, we can't forget that under our current zoning, we're already getting growth that we don't want to see in terms of the proliferation of really expensive luxury developments. I think there's a broad consensus that our current zoning just isn't working and it's not getting us the outcomes we want to see. To the other point though, and I think this is why we really need to be really intentional and thoughtful about zoning, is that around entrance corridors and certain neighborhoods, you know, if you reduce R1 zoning, it can create more affordable housing. But especially in working-class neighborhoods, especially working-class African-American neighborhoods like 10th and Page and Fifeville, there is a potential, if you reduce R1 zoning, that you could incentivize investment of house flippers who come in and purchase homes and flip them for three, four times the price and you can accelerate gentrification.
I was going to ask you about this.
Yeah. And so I think that's why we need to be really careful and intentional about where we are making zoning changes because the research-
Where would you make the zoning changes then? Because it backfired on 10th and Page.
Well, I mean, certainly, you know, there's all kinds of dynamics that have been gentrifying 10th and Page. And especially the growth of the university. I mean, there's just so much pressure on that neighborhood. And again, canvassing there, you can see it house by house where it's being flipped and people will be sent notices in the mail saying, you know, like, we buy homes with cash. You know, people will get four or five in a month with investors just waiting to buy the homes of longtime residents and flip them for a quick profit. I mean, we saw it with Belmont Apartments in Belmont. So I think, you know, I think there's, I think there's some sort of low-hanging fruit in a sense in terms of making some zoning changes, maybe around the entrance corridor near barracks where you're already seeing some density. And I think you could make some changes that would really fit in and not be disruptive in any way and, and sort of ease the community into seeing, and to have the community contribute to this process and, and have an active role. I think, you know, you look at the research on affordable housing and density and zoning changes. And let's say you create a really dense, expensive development. It has a ton of units, but they're selling for, you know, they're renting for like, you know, 1,800 a month. That may reduce rents regionally. But in that specific neighborhood, if it's in a low-income neighborhood, it will increase rents and assessments in that specific neighborhood. And that's the dynamic we need to be really careful about, I think, is not placing all of our density into working-class neighborhoods because that will raise assessments in that neighborhood, increase people's assessment. So, you know, even if people who are homeowners can't afford to stay in their home and people who are renting in that neighborhood will see pressure for their rents to go up. That's what we have to be careful about.
We're seeing that. Welcome Keith Smith to the show. It sounds like you're going to join us on Real Talk.
Yeah.
On the 21st coming up. Keith Smith, the Yes Team, live on seven channels across the I Love Seaville network. Becca Cole says, this is such an important conversation to be having. I'm enjoying the show. Thank you, Michael Payne, for bringing these issues to the forefront for a whole new group of Charlottesville residents. I'm glad you won the primary. I can't wait to see you on city council. That's from Becca Cole. If you have a message that you'd like to relay to Michael Payne, I'm happy to do that. We're going to talk about Abby's comment about West Bellamy's Run These Streets and whether Joffrey would consider partnering with the community to help a service like this. Abby says the show was fantastic today. Thanks for this conversation. Happy to relay any message that you have to Michael Payne as long as it's on point with the new cycle, respectful, and it's something that's worth talking about, I should say. Let me throw this to you. A lot I want to cover here. You really got my mind going. So you, you look at what's happening on, around West Haven.
Yeah.
West Haven is, is it, is the right, is the right terminology, section eight housing or public housing?
West Haven is public housing.
Public housing.
By the Housing Authority.
Okay, so public housing. All around West Haven, there are apartment towers being built. I go to Peloton Station, the bike shop, restaurant bar a lot. And every time I'm there, which is in the 10th and Page quarter, I'm seeing tremendous gentrification. I'm seeing apartment towers towering, for lack of a better phrase, over West Haven. I see West Haven having pressure and essentially, in a lot of ways, becoming almost like the new Fifeville. And what I mean by that is like, it's about to have a dramatic evolution or change of its characteristics potentially. Because as the, these apartment complexes tower over West Haven, they're going to spread and push and push and push. And West Haven is going to feel the pressure of like, man, this plot of land could be monetized to the tune of 500 apartments at 16, 1700 a month. How the heck do you stop that?
Yeah. And, and-
Do you see that potentially happening?
Oh, I mean, it's already happening. I mean, you know, walk around West Haven and you, you can see the apartments, the luxury student apartments on West Main Street literally tower over and cast a shadow. And then on the other end, you have the redevelopment of Dairy Central happening. And sort of from both ends, you're seeing that gentrification slowly creep in. And I think it again speaks to why zoning reform is so important because historically, the dynamic has been that we push all of our density. City council has pushed all density and growth into neighborhoods that they thought-
Impoverse neighborhoods.
Right. Neighborhoods that they thought they would get, that they could do it in. And so they avoided, you know, you've avoided growth in wealthier neighborhoods. But in our low-income neighborhoods, city council made the decision, and maybe not even consciously, but the de facto outcome was all our density is going to be pushed into low-income, particularly low-income African-American neighborhoods. And that's something that is really important for us as city council to reverse that and make sure that, you know, as we're growing as a city, that it's, we're not just pushing all of our density into low-income neighborhoods and, and gentrifying them.
And why do you think that was happening? Do you think it was happening? A number of reasons. I'm going to spitball with you. Maybe the, those particular pockets or those neighborhoods perhaps did not have the loudest voices before council to say, stop, stop, stop doing this. Also perhaps because the real estate tax revenue was not the most robust from those pockets of neighborhood. Why would you develop or gentrify or, or, or make more dense? A neighborhood that has potentially eight, nine hundred, eight, nine hundred thousand, a million dollar homes where the tax revenue from that real estate is significant? Perhaps you think strategically from an economic standpoint, you do it with homes that are 100, 150, 200,000 where the tax revenue is much less comparable. Throw that to you.
I think, you know, there are likely a lot of reasons. You know, I think one of the biggest that comes to mind, it was probably political where, you know, they, they saw that, you know, certain neighborhood, neighborhoods, they viewed as being their base and their constituency who said, you know, no, not here. And so they didn't want to do it there. And they felt they would get more political resistance doing it there. And they felt they would get less political resistance from who they considered to be their base i- in those neighborhoods. And, you know, that's, that's an ugly dynamic, but I think-
That's politics.
Well, it's the reality of what we've seen in, in Charlottesville and part of why we really need to change and have been changing how we operate as a city. And to listen to everyone in the community and give priority to everyone in the community. So, you know, I think, you know, the current conversations we've seen around affordable housing and zoning reform are, I really think, trying to be an antidote to that kind of development that we've seen. And I think as a city, you know, we've been making a lot of progress and, you know, I'm hopeful that we can move away from that kind of dynamic. As for other things that we can do to help prevent gentrification in those neighborhoods, I think a really powerful model is the community land trust model.
You just got to comment on that.
Yeah. Other cities have been using community land trusts. Burlington, Vermont has over 2,000 household members. It has a mix of duplexes, apartments, single-family homes. And I think the, the community land trust model is a really, one of the most powerful ways to stop gentrification and give neighborhoods control over development and, and try and reverse the dynamic of speculative investment that's flipping homes and pushing out longtime residents.
You got to comment and just, it's perfect timing for this. Keith Smith, real estate agent, very successful one. That's why the land trust works so well. An example, Nassau Street.
Yeah.
Is we're bringing to the market 1,500 square foot homes with solar at 215,000 each that appraise at nearly 350,000. So you're making quality homes a realistic possibility for people who don't necessarily have deep, as deep a pockets. Which is something that they're doing. A lot of questions coming in. You're doing really well. I want to get to as many questions as possible. I also want to be mindful of your time. This is an interesting question. We talked about this on yesterday's roundtable with Charlotte and Elliot. There are three Democrats that are running, or three Democrats that made it through the primary.
Yeah.
Yourself, Lloyd, and Sina McGill. The question we were spitballing is, will the three of you join forces to run on one ticket as Democrats to get the three open seats on council? The second part of the question is, how do you necessarily do that when your politics are potentially very different from Lloyd's politics? Sina is probably closer to yours than Lloyd as well. Does that potentially marginalize the efforts that you've made up until this point with your campaign?
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, you know, what we'll do going forward is see where we have shared priorities and how we can work together to advance those priorities. And I think there are some shared priorities on, you know, positive changes locally in terms of, you know, creating a regional transit authority, local action on climate change. And, you know, in campaigning and canvassing and talking to voters, what people were most hungry for, I think, is the ability for city council to unify around policy solutions that make an impact in people's day-to-day lives. And that's the goal. And I think, you know, going forward, we'll be able to do that. You know, certainly, you know, each campaign has their own message and has been running their campaign. And, you know, this campaign, my campaign has always been about uplifting the work of the community. And that's going to continue. And, you know, I'm going to advocate for what I believe in. But I don't think it, you know, I think, you know, we'll be able to go forward and, and continue to advocate for, you know, things like community land trusts, doing redevelopment of public housing, supporting the redevelopment of Friendship Court that's happening. You know, public transportation, a lot of other issues. And sorry, what was the second part of the question?
I just can't see, this is the second part. I just can't see, and this is just one man's perspective. You can handle this any way you want. I just cannot see three of you almost forming a team or a ticket and making the push to November 5th as a unit because the politics are so different. And it's almost the antithesis of what your campaign is all about. Because your campaign in a lot of, a lot of ways is this grassroots pivot nimble, stay true to our core, stay true to our values. And in a lot of ways, your politics are very different than Lloyd's politics. So that's why I don't see this unit or this cohesion happening. Maybe the strategy is to do this to ensure the three of you get on council. I think you have one real threat, and this is me talking, not you, one real threat in Bellamy Brown that could potentially knock one of you three out on November 5th. And he's watching now. So I think he is the one, Hall and Long, not marginalizing anyone, I'm just talking from a realistic standpoint. War chest numbers, name recognition. I don't think Hall and Long have a chance here on November 5th. I think perhaps they didn't want to win, maybe. And they were doing this more to either get name recognition or get a message out there. Bellamy is balls to the wall. You know, and he wants to win. I mean, he's a Marine.
Yeah.
You know, he's committed and focused. Throw all that to you. You go anywhere you want.
Yeah. Well, you know, I think, you know, Paul Long, you know, runs to get a message out there, especially about public transportation. And I think he's had some success in getting that message out.
He has.
We see, you know, every, every candidate now in the primary supported creating a regional transit authority, which shows the success he's been able to have in getting that message out. I certainly think that Bellamy Brown is going to run a serious campaign. And I look forward to seeing how it progresses. You know, I don't take anything for granted. You know, we're going to work just as hard as we did in the primary in the general to go out into the community, listen to folks. And, and, and my campaign was always about uplifting the work of the community. It really was not about me. It was about the work going on in the community, the progressive movement that's been growing locally and how, you know, we can amplify what they're doing and support what they're doing. And that work is never done. So, you know, last night I was out at the Charlottesville Center for Peace and Justice, had an event where they bring together, you know, local nonprofits-
You're a man about towns lately.
Who talk about, who talk about the work they've been doing and their goals going into the next year. And, you know, I was out there talking about the work Indivisible and the Low Income Housing Coalition have doing, have been doing. And, you know, I plan to, to continue to be out there because what people want is to see progress made on affordable housing, on climate change, on racial equity, on inequality. And accomplishing that work is going to require all of us as a community being able to come together. All of us as a community continuing to work. And that goes way beyond any one election cycle. And my campaign has always been about trying to take that community organizing approach that actively engages and, and tries to support that kind of work.
Let's talk, let's talk crystal ball. We can't put the cart before the horse. We're spitballing for the sake of a talk show. And we're going to spitball for the take of, of a talk show based on data, which is the votes in the Democratic primary, based on war chest numbers and based on, would you like some more water?
Uh, I'm good.
Okay. Based on, based on name recognition. Okay. So there's, I see two scenarios playing out. Scenario one is the three Democrats get the three seats on council. And that's yourself, Lloyd, Snook, and Sina McGill. In that scenario one, you would think potentially, based on politics, that Sina, yourself, and Mayor Walker, who have very similar politics, would be voting almost as a block potentially for the next two years and change, roughly three years, on policies and initiatives moving forward. Scenario two is Bellamy knocks off one of your three. Based on the numbers we saw from the primary, based on the numbers, that one is potentially Sina because she had the least amount of votes coming out of the primary. So in that scenario, it's Bellamy Brown, Lloyd Snook, and potentially their politics kind of align and also align with Heather Hills. And Hill, Snook, and Brown vote as a block. And their politics on, they're voting on policy and initiatives moving forward for the next three years, really determining the future of Charlottesville. Scenario one and scenario two, open ended to you. Thoughts on scenarios?
Well, I've, I've followed-
I'm sure you've thought of this.
I've followed politics for a long enough time to know that it's never worth making predictions.
Oh man, okay.
And that's not a cop-out, but, you know, I really think that anything's possible. You know, it's still, we're still a long ways away from November. We don't know how things are going to shake out. Like I said, I'm not taking anything for granted. We're going to continue to work as hard as possible. And, you know, I, I, I truly think anything's possible. When it comes, you know, I've been going to, you know, pretty much every city council meeting over the past three years. And block voting doesn't always break down the ways you think it will. I think, you know, when we think about, you know, creating blocks, it's not always as clear-cut as it seems. And, you know, we don't know exactly how things would shake out. And again, there are certainly, you know, I think there are a lot of shared priorities in the community in terms of public transportation. in the community in terms of public transportation, some things on affordable housing, and, you know, it's just, it's hard to predict. I know, I know that's not fun, but-
That's fair. No, I mean, it's fair, I, I understand. Let me throw this to you. Should you win a spot on council, and the data says you will, who would you vote for mayor? Because the five council members determine the mayor.
Again, I mean, that's an impossible question to answer because we don't know who's gonna be interested in, you know, throwing their hat in to be mayor. We don't know who the candidates elected in November will be. And so there's just, there's a lot of variables there.
Would you vote Michael Payne?
I wouldn't, I would not want to be mayor, no.
Okay. Do you see any value in the experience of the current mayor having another run with it because she's got one year under her belt? Or do you think we need a fresh start?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly think there could be value to it. I mean, I think, especially after, you know, the events of August 11th and 12th and the entire summer of 2017, to have our first African-American woman be mayor is a really powerful moment for the city. And, you know, something that, you know, definitely, and I think, you know, Nakai has been able to push the conversation forward on a lot of things and, you know, represent people in Charlottesville who haven't always had a voice on city council. And I think that's something that has a lot of value. But of course, you know, yeah.
Question coming in. How do you plan to help our most impoverished communities, Michael, outside of affordable housing? That's a good question.
Yeah. You know, I think a lot of it comes down to, as I mentioned earlier, creating strategies for community wealth building. How can we open up opportunities for people, more people to become small business owners, to have access to our growing tech industry? I think city council has made some good progress. You know, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Wes Bellamy's initiative, creating a low-interest-rate loan fund to help small businesses, especially minority-owned, small businesses start up and get support. I think that's, that's a really important piece of it, especially since historically our financial institutions have not given loans to, you know, African-American residents in the United States as easily or as with the same interest rates as they have to white people. And so I think that's something that's really powerful. And I think a lot of it comes down to the question of ownership and how do we increase homeownership? How do we increase local business ownership? Because that's where a lot of generational wealth is built. And I think you look historically at the racial wealth gap in the United States, and it's driven by disparities in homeownership. And certainly, we have a long history in Charlottesville of urban renewal and redlining and racial covenants that prevented our African-American residents from having access to homeownership. And I think it's really important to, to, to think about that and to, to think about how it ties into affordable housing as well in terms of how do we create a ladder of home opportunity where we're, you know, in the redevelopment of public housing process, we're providing opportunities for people to become homeowners eventually. And as well as to, again, use HUD Section 3 to think about how can you use the redevelopment process to go beyond just housing, but provide job opportunities, provide training in financial literacy and other programs like that. I know that's something that, you know, you can also partner with community development corporations in a really exciting way, I think, to promote that kind of ownership model. And it's a question, I think, we have to look at a lot of the community in terms of, you know, when it comes to our land, when it comes to development, when it comes to homeownership, who owns what? And it comes to our small businesses, who owns what? Because a lot of times, it's a lot fewer people who own a majority of the city than people realize.
Oh, yeah.
And it's how, how can we open that up to more people?
I mean, guys, Ludwig Kootner, Alan Kajin, these mass, these huge developers own a large portion of the commercial real estate. And Alan Kajin's an attorney in, in San Francisco. A lot of ways, his ying to his yang was Gabe Silverman, who has since passed away. And Kajin is more razor-focused on the bottom line, where Gabe was more focused on culture and community and humanitarian efforts. Few more questions coming in. You, you're doing an excellent job, there's been positive feedback here. This question is about the Landmark Hotel, which I think is a topic on everyone's mind. And, and this question is, we were, Caroline Long, watching in North Downtown. Jerry, I love your show, I try to tune in all the time. The Landmark Hotel is a blight on our downtown mall. I see it whenever I'm down there with my kids. It is not fun, and it is also now becoming unsavory. And what I mean by that, there's a lot of folks hanging around the Landmark Hotel that I feel threatened with when I'm down there with my kids, especially after hours, after nighttime hours. Michael, what is your plan for the Landmark Hotel? There was a deal that was almost in place. Dr. Wes Bellamy changed his vote in the last minute and, you know, try to leverage this for some other initiatives? What are your thoughts on the Landmark Hotel, and we can take this structure, please, off our downtown mall? That's a good question.
Yeah, and, you know, that's a question that's come up a lot during the campaign and is certainly on everyone's minds. Our challenge going forward is how do we move forward and create a unified negotiating strategy? You know, I've said this before, but I think the, the, the challenge we face with the Landmark Hotel is that the city council and city government did not have a unified negotiating strategy. In 2016, I believe, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to move forward with trying to declare the property as blight, and city council made some moves to move in that direction. Then they reversed course and decided to enter direct negotiations with John Duberry. And then obviously, they ended up reversing course again at the last minute. And so I think it's really important for us on city council to be on the same page about what our strategy is and move forward with it. I myself, I favor taking an aggressive negotiating strategy. You know, Bloomberg Business did a profile of John Duberry where they dubbed him-
Emperor.
-the Emperor of Empty Lots.
We've added to that, and we call him now the extorting Emperor of Empty Lots.
The extorting Emperor of Empty Lots. I mean, he's, he's doing this in cities throughout the South. He buys properties in downtown areas, refuses to develop until he gets public money. The one project he has completed in Charleston, South Carolina-
Hotel.
-he ended up suing the city, and he didn't follow through on what he promised he would do on some things with the Board of Architectural Review and city government. So this is, in a lot of ways, a Trump-like developer who is, you know, doesn't have the best interest, his only consideration is-
His bottom line.
-how can I extract as much money from this process as I can? And so we need to go into negotiations, keeping that in mind, and think about what are the actions we can take that are gonna increase costs, either financial or reputational, to the point where he feels like he has to come to the negotiating table, sell the property, or start developing it. I think some actions we can pursue, you know, in the short term include trying to have an independent structural integrity analysis done by an engineer. Duberry himself had one done by someone he described as a friend who happened to have a PhD in engineering. I think it would be good to get an independent look at that because I think there are some concerns about, you know, at this point, the landmark being unsafe. I mean, you had-
You have people climbing the structure and graffitiing.
You have climbing the structure, you have, you had a piece of the scaffolding that's put on at Fall and hit CVS. And I mean, that, that's something that really could have, you know, that's something that could have killed someone. And so-
Will you emphasize that should you win the Landmark Hotel?
Yeah, and I think, you know, we should really explore that action, you know, getting an independent analysis done. I think we should explore moving towards declaring the property as a public nuisance, which is a separate issue from eminent domain. Those are two separate issues. It is allowed under local and state law. You see local governments frequently, and in Charlottesville's own past, it's declared properties as blight. Now, of course, taking that action, you know, John Duberry is very wealthy, and I'm sure he will respond to that with a legal challenge.
Yeah, he definitely will.
You know, that's, that's our barrier there. But I think it's something we should explore because, again, we're dealing with someone who's not operating in good faith, and we have to get creative. And I think, you know, try and, you know, tap into some community organizing approaches to keep the public pressure on. And, you know, maybe if, you know, it turns out that, you know, we're limited in legal actions we can take to really put a reputational cost for what he's doing.
That's what we're trying to do. And every time we come up, we try to hate on the brand.
And I've seen that, and it's, you know, and when someone operates like that, you know, that's all you can do. Because obviously, you know, people visit Charlottesville for the first time, they see it, and they think, oh, you know, that must just be under construction. Then you come back again, and you're like, huh. The third time-
My wife's family.
What's going on here?
What's going on here?
You know, it's been, what, over, over a decade at this point? So, yeah. And, you know, it's, it's definitely, you know, we, I think we have to be aggressive because, you know, when you're dealing with someone who owns it and doesn't wanna develop it and, and wants to extract as much from the city as possible, you know, we're just in a tough place as a community.
Turn the Landmark Hotel onto the last sizzle reel, please. I thought that was a great answer. Start with Caroline Long's question, all the way through that answer. We're gonna wind down with a couple more questions. He's got a show to prepare for at 3:00, and I know your time is valuable. There's a lot of questions, guys, we're not gonna be able to get to, and it's not because I don't care about your questions and they're not valuable or on point, it's just we, his most precious commodity is his time, and he's giving us an hour right now, it's 1:35. So I'm gonna, a couple more here.
I can, a couple more minutes would be fine.
Okay, is that okay? Yeah. This is a good question. This is, I don't want my name on air, but please ask Mr. Michael Payne this question. What are your thoughts on a strong mayor versus a citywide, versus a, a mayor appointed by Charlottesville City Council? I'm gonna add to this, to add some clarity to this question. A strong mayor could be a mayor that's elected by the citizens of the city, where right now our mayor is appointed by five city council members. Strong mayor versus a mayor appointed by city council.
Yeah. Well, and, and to do that would require Charlottesville City Council voting to want a charter amendment to the city charter-
Yeah, amend the charter.
-that the General Assembly would then have to approve. We've seen other cities have moved to a strong mayor system from a, a weak mayor system. Richmond, Virginia bounced back several different times between the strong mayor and the city manager, weak mayor form of government. I think when, you know, I think the conversation around, you know, the structure of local government, I, I support having a conversation about it because I think it's really important for more people to learn about the different types of local government structures there are in Virginia. I think a lot of people don't realize that there are different models and that-
A lot of people don't.
Yeah, and I think it's a really important conversation. You know, myself, I'm, I'm not totally sure what the, the merits of a strong mayor system are versus our city manager system in terms of, I think if you have a strong city manager who is on the same page and wants to be an active partner with council, I think you can achieve a lot of the things you could with a strong mayor system. But, you know, I'm certainly open to continuing the conversation, and I think a, a change like that, though, I think has to be really thoughtful, and we would need to do a lot of work with community engagement. And I think a change like that, you know, ideally, we would see a public referendum to get a sense of whether the community as a whole wants to transition to a strong mayor system. At the moment, again, it's something I haven't thought too much about at the moment, you know, I would not be inclined to say, you know, we should move towards a strong mayor system. It's not something that I would prioritize or support at the moment, but I'm, I'm glad the conversation is happening, and I appreciate the question because talking about the structure of local government is something that, you know, I, I think is a conversation we often ignore.
Two questions, and we'll close with this. Two questions left. Two very valuable questions. This one, one question is on the city manager, which we will save to the last, new city manager, Dr. Richardson, and how should you win, how you're gonna interact or manage him? Maybe manage is not the right word, but the, the city manager runs the city.
Right.
The council is influencing and help direct the city manager.
Right.
That's gonna be my last question. My, my second to last question is, is something that Mayor Walker brought up yesterday on social media. Almarle County Board of Supervisors, they've had one African-American in the history of Almarle County Board of Supervisors win a spot on the Board of Supervisors, one. On Tuesday, Gerard Smith, who I've had on this show, who we backed, who I'm a huge fan of, he lost to someone that is relatively new to the area, still about 10 years or so of time in the community, a Californian, and B, Lepisto Kurtley. Mayor Walker said it's a travesty that we've only had one African-American in the history of Almarle County on the Board of Supervisors. Your thoughts on the topic? I found this, the statistics startling.
Yeah.
One African-American in a position of leadership in Almarle County in the history of the municipality?
Right.
That is startling.
Right. So, I forgot the first question.
The, 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 the question for this is, is what needs to be done? How can the city influence this? The city and the county work hand in hand? There's a rev share agreement? I mean, what can be done here to potentially change this?
Yeah. Well, I think, to the, to the first question about the city manager, you know, I'm optimistic. I think Dr. Richardson is gonna do a great job, and I, you know, he's, I've seen him going out to community events and really engaging with the community, and I'm really optimistic about the future direction of the city. And I think our role as counselors is to try and provide, you know, a unified voice to give direction to the city manager. So the city manager has clear expectations about what we as council would like to see achieved, and then he will have the, the expertise to be able to carry that out in terms of, you know, you know, being unified on council, saying, you know, we would like these changes made in Neighborhood Development Services, we would like to hire someone who can do long-range planning, we would like to see, you know, as an ultimate goal, creating a regional transit authority, would like to see this happen and with city staff, you know, working with the housing authority to make redevelopment of public housing happen, those kind of things, and then to be a really close partner with the city manager. I think, you know, that's our role, that's where we can have a big impact, and I'm optimistic that the future city council will be able to do that and will really be able to work with Dr. Richardson as, as a close partner. As to the second question, you know, I, you know, I supported Gerard. I was disappointed to see that he wasn't win. I got a chance to meet him during the campaign. We did an interview together with Charlottesville tomorrow. I thought, you know, growing up in the area, I thought he had, you know, a good vision for the future of the county-
Me too.
-and had a good vision about, you know, how, you know, we're increasingly in Charlottesville and Almarle One community, and to think about there being divisions between the city and county, I think, isn't working in terms of planning anymore, where, you know, if you make, you know, $12 an hour working at UVA, but you live in the county and you drive into the city to work, you're not concerned about those divisions, you just want a Board of Supervisors and a city council who are working together to help improve your life. You know, that said, I think his opponent B, you know, is, is, you know, gonna do a great job and, and was a good candidate. And, you know, I'm optimistic that we can work together, city council and Board of Supervisors. But that issue of diversity in the Board of Supervisors is a huge one. Charlottesville is increasingly, or Charlottesville as well, you know, but Almarle is increasingly becoming more and more diverse.
Yeah.
You're seeing the growth of a large Hispanic population in Almarle County that's growing.
Southwood.
And Charlottesville's a diverse county when you, you know, you think about communities like Esmont and Southwood, and, you know, that needs to be reflected in local government and on the Board of Supervisors, I think.
Agreed.
And, you know, I hope, you know, I hope we can see more candidates from diverse backgrounds step up and run. I think a big barrier is, you know, not just in Almarle, but a lot of communities, there's definitely a network of people who have been in power in the past, and for a lot of people who haven't been, you know, if you're not connected to that power structure, then the barriers to running for office are higher. And, you know, that's something that we need to break down and provide more support for candidates from different backgrounds who are running, not just in Almarle, but at every level. Charlottesville, Almarle, Buckingham, Nelson, Fluvana. And, you know, I hope, you know, I, I think, you know, Gerard will still be, still be around-
Always got a bright future.
-and still be involved, yeah, and definitely, and, you know, I hope he stays involved, but, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you know, the Board of Supervisors, I don't think were able to be as effective representatives of the community as possible if they're not reflecting the diversity that exists in the county.
Amen.
And that, that's not a knock on anyone, but that's just-
Facts.
It's just a reality.
Yeah. I think one of the biggest barriers of entry, and we'll close on this, thank you for your time, one of the biggest area barriers of entry for the Board of Supervisors is they're making like 16, $17,000. They're giving each other a 2% raise that was just voted on recently, and that 2% raise[1730.01] voted on recently. And that 2% raise kind of like correlated to like $400. And these Boards of Supervisors are expected to work 60 hours a week for like $16,000, $17,000. I mean, if, who can, who can, who can be a Board of Supervisor unless you're retired or wealthy, or, you know, a stay-at-home parent, or just have deep pockets?
Yeah.
I mean, that's a huge barrier. You crushed it today. I appreciate you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, I appreciate you. I, thank you. Thank you. You do well every time. The show in totality will be archived on iloveSeville.com for you to watch it start to finish. We're going to cut approachable clips from the show, sizzle reels. And we're going to syndicate the show in totality and the sizzle reels across our network for 30 to 45 days so you can further get to know Michael Payne. And I think his team has done a really good job of introducing him, his beliefs, his tenets, his platform to the community. I thank him for his most valuable time. You're getting props from people. I'll relay some of the props. James Watson says, "Michael Payne is a young man with a huge brain and a bright future." Tim agrees with that. Abby agrees with that. Keith Smith says, "Great answer, Michael Payne." Abby says, "Sizzle reel the whole damn show."
[laughing]
So thank you for that, Abby. Give it a like and a share. We are going to be back tomorrow. Is tomorrow Friday? Yeah, tomorrow is Friday. Musical Suspects are going to join us. Matthew Ferguson's band live on set tomorrow. We're going to have some fun on Friday. We close the show the same way every time. And we close the show by asking everybody to embody the golden rule. I don't make it about religion. I make it about treating others with the same respect that you want for yourself. Treat others how you want to be treated yourself. And watch how it has a positive viral impact across our community. For Michael Payne, for Harris Tolbert, Judah Whitkower, for Lauren Linsky, my name is Jerry Miller. It's the I Love Seville Show. We will see you at 3 o'clock with the Charity Focus Caring for Creatures show, and tomorrow with a live music show with Musical Suspects. Take care.
Thank you. Is the live music new?
Uh, we do it every Friday.
Oh, wow.
So we're like eight weeks in. Some of our neighbors are not huge fans, but at the same time, we have a good time.
Yeah.
Let's get a picture of you. You have an email addie?
Yeah.
Okay, fantastic. We'll send you the content. We'll shake hands.